At the meeting of the South Huron and Regional Board of Education is called to order. Adequate notice as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided on December the 5th, 2022 by posting the notice with the respective clerks of the city of Lamontville, Borough of Stockton, and Township of West Danwell, and advertised on December the 8th, 2022, in the Huron County Democrat and the Trenton Times newspaper. Please stand for the flag salute. Roll call, please.
Gina Pashetti?
Yes.
Ryan Keys?
Here.
Kevin Kowaleski?
Here.
John Lewis?
Here.
Trace Petrucci?
Here.
Brianna Purcell?
Here.
Megan Warner? Ronnie Tomorino?
Here.
Tim Gallin?
Here. And just for the audience, Mr. Suso is with us on the phone. He is not feeling well tonight, so he's calling in from home. And Mrs. Petrucci is also with us on the phone. Ms. Warner was delayed in a storm, and so will not be making it tonight. We're going to start this evening with a report from our student representative of the board, Ryan Rampell.
It started off, "In December, our middle school and high school band and chorus performed our winter concerts. Our elementary school students attended a performance organized by the South Music Department. A huge thank you to Mr. Stevens and Mrs. Crim for successful shows. We also hosted our senior citizen holiday luncheon, which was followed by a choral performance. School activities since we returned from break. Mrs. David held a chill skills group for middle school and high school, which focused on dealing with stress. After-school tutori- tutorials for middle school and high school students began last week. Library had two sessions of yoga at the library with representatives from One Voice for students' staff during the luncheon. Future Educators Association had an informational meeting on Friday. The Key Club served at the Trenton area soup kitchen last Tuesday. Our National Honor Society tutoring sessions have been held on Mondays and Thursdays." For our sports update, over the River Holiday Basketball Tournament was over winter break. Both boys and girls teams were tournament champs. All tournament team was Katie Fleming and Tanner McCaffrey. Tournament MVPs were Eve Dirkie Newman and Aaron Zelazak. Our athletes of the week were Yordi Cruz Santiago for wrestling and Katie Fleming for basketball. We hosted the first home wrestling match in 22 years last Tuesday, January 17. It was Hightstown versus South won. High school boys' basketball hosted LBA night on January 19 versus Bernard's High School. All LBA rec players who wore their T-shirts received free admittance to the game.
Is that the full report?
Yep.
Okay. So one other thing that's going on is Night at the Nest. The kids have started practicing for that, and Ryan is one of them. He is on the blue team, which won the event last year. So I'm going to let, I'll say, "Thank you, Ryan." Actually, I'm going to say, "If the board have any questions or anything for Ryan." Now, I'll say, "Thank you, Ryan. Good luck in your Night at the Nest practice."
Have a good meet.
You, too. So Night at the Nest this year, one thing is, last year was the first year back after a couple of years' absence because of COVID. They did make an accommodation to it last year and held it a little later than we usually do. It was in the spring, and it was held outside in the football stadium, which was really kind of neat and fun and a big space. This year, my understanding is they're bringing it back into the gym. So it usually is held in March, kind of at the end of basket, a little after basketball season ends and before the spring sports really, sports really get going. So, you know, keep an eye out. There will be things sent home. It is a great event. It is fun to see these kids compete, and they go at it hard, and then they come together at the end, and it's a really great sort of South Huron and Community thing. With that, I am going to ask, we are at Point E, PTO, PTA, LAEF update, so I'll ask first, is there anyone from the LAEF who can give us an update? No? How about the PTO?
Hey, guys. Jessica Hartigan, West Danwell, PTO. Good evening. Earlier in the month, we held a meeting to discuss the future of the parent organizations in the district. A plan for a district-wide parent organization had been floated to the group. This is just a rough idea, and it hasn't been fully structured, but the general idea is to streamline communication to parents, cut down on operating costs such as insurance, movie licenses, and membership platform fees. An added benefit to this plan would be signing up in pre-K for one organization and having the same membership platform, same social media page, et cetera, to carry you the whole way through to senior year, which really does streamline it a little bit and makes it less confusing. The buildings themselves would run and plan all of their own activities, and the purpose of the district-wide organization would solely be for administrat- admin- goodness, I can't talk tonight, administrative purposes. All that being said, that is one idea that has just been presented, and we would love to hear from the community. We plan to meet with Tony later in the week via Zoom to discuss specific needs at the middle school, high school level, and what the expectations would be for a parent organization at those levels. We would like to form a focus group of middle school, high school teachers, and maybe a few parents to discuss this further. If you are a parent or a staff member interested in shaping the future of the parent organizations in the district, please feel free to reach out to the PTO. We plan to set another meeting soon, so please look for a date and time in the near future. We're still running our Box Tops contest. The winner or the winning grade will receive a prize at the end. Each month, we'll be running a side contest to increase participation. The winning classes will receive a Philly Pretzel snack at school. The fundraiser is super easy to do. You download the Box Tops for Education app, enter your info, and start scanning your receipts. This is free money for our school systems and our children. It's something the whole family can get in on, too. Grandparents, aunts, uncles, et cetera, can scan receipts or save them for another family member to be scanned. If there are any community members who have questions or would like a tutorial, we have one saved in our meeting minutes that can easily be sent to community members. Our sixth graders are nearly done with our fundraising efforts. Thanks to their efforts, there will be an awesome end of the year. Well, they'll have an awesome end of the year and their time, and their, and an end to their time at West Danwell School. Thank you to all the parents who supported these fundraising efforts and to the parent volunteers who ran these amazing fundraisers. Your hard work has not gone unnoticed. Our next Kids Night Out will be Friday, February 3rd. The link is live on Membership Toolkit. The fee for online registration is $20 and $25 at the door. These events are capped for safety reasons, so we ask that parents and guardians try to preregister their kids because we try to keep the numbers down to keep the kids safe. Our next member meeting will be Monday, February 13th at 7:30 in the West Danwell School Library. Thank you.
Thank you. One question, Jessica. In December, you guys were selling alumni gear, I think?
Yeah.
Are you, is that still available?
It closed, but we could, we can still order them, yeah.
Okay. All right. Very good.
I can send you the link or if you need it.
Thank you. Do we have a representative here from the PTI? Stephanie, how are you? Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Good to see all of you. Stephanie Volmer from the LPS PTA. I just, I want to follow up on one thing Jess said, which is the, how much we all really hope that we can get a lot of input from parents and teachers and staff and the entire community for the new vision for a parent-teacher homeschool kind of organization that might come post all the changes that are coming. So, so please, I hope everyone will spread the word and keep it on your radar to keep an eye out for meetings and focus groups and surveys and those kinds of things because we really feel the need to make sure that we're getting a lot of support and input from the community to make sure that everyone feels like it's what's being shaped is going to work best for everyone. Our next PTA meeting is this Wednesday at 5:30 in person at LPS, and we're hoping for a big turnout because there's a lot of spring planning that we want to do. So just to have things, to have everyone know what's coming up, we're things like the Spring Book Fair, which will be a local book fair, the Field Day event. They're doing a lot to plan for Earth Day. I know that's something that's trying to do a lot of different things for Earth Day this year. So Wednesday night, 5:30 at LPS. Our sixth graders are doing a great job with their fundraising. I think they've got about $7,500 so far. The next big event for them will be the Valentine's Day Dance on February 10th with a bake sale. Thank you to all the parents who are coming out to support those efforts, and we're almost there, so it's great. And I think that is everything on my list, so thank you.
Very good. Let's see, next correspondence. We did have one letter from Jen Bachelor-Biagi, and she mentioned that it is the second marking period has just ended, honor roll. We have a, you know, we have a listing of students who made the honor roll, and she made the suggestion that we should be publishing that list of students because we're very proud of all the students who made the honor roll. I know a number of our committees, we've discussed it. I think most people, we all agree it's a, it's a very good idea, especially without having a local newspaper anymore, where we used to be able to print these things in the newspaper. So I believe there will be some recognition breakfast, and we will be sending that, that list of achievers out. I also have here a note from our South Huron and Key Club. It says, "To the members of the school board, thank you for paying for our annual membership to the Key Club Association. We appreciate your dedication to our club," and is signed by the advisor and a number of members, which I think is a very nice note. I will say, I just, I did happen to notice on Facebook recently that they, they were involved in a community, like a lunch or something?
Trenton area soup.
Trenton area soup kitchen, yeah. So fantastic that they're out there in the community and doing that kind of work. You know, just very proud. No other correspondence, so I will go to the approval of the minutes, and I will ask for a resolution to approve the minutes of the December 19th and the January 2nd meeting and of the executive minutes. Diana, thank you. Can I have a second, please?
Okay.
Second, Ronnie, thank you. Any discussion of the minutes of those meetings?
I have a question.
Yes, Dana.
Are they being approved altogether?
We typically will approve them all together.
Okay.
It's okay for you to vote yes, even to the, you are a member of the board. You can vote yes or no. If you feel more comfortable abstaining on the December 19th?
Yeah.
And voting yes to the January 2nd, can we reflect that in your record of the votes, please? I think we can still combine the votes as long as we're reflecting that. Is that correct, Andrew? So this is a voice vote. So any other discussion on the minutes? In that case, all in favor?
All right.
Does anyone oppose? Does anyone abstain?
For the?
And you're abstaining for the December 19th minutes. Thank you. Okay. Now, the moment you've all been waiting for, we are up to our reports, and we're going to start with a fun one. Lamontville Public School Community Garden. Ms. Canones, are you going to introduce the group or? You're just?
The entire key.
Okay.
Really made up of students and two amazing teachers, so this is their time to shine. I couldn't be more proud. I'll introduce Ms. Gardener, Ms. Layla. Way to come on up.
So, good evening. Thank you for having us. It's nice to see everyone. We'd like to thank the Board of Education for giving us the opportunity to share tonight. We're all very excited to tell you about what we've been doing in the school garden. So the community garden has been in Alea Park and cared for by LPS students and teachers for a while now. Every year, students plant vegetables and herbs with their teachers. Students weed, water, and harvest what they plant. We also work with local farmers from Gravity Hill and Cedar Hill Farm, who provide us with organic seeds, starter plants, soil, and books for the classroom. Students engage in hands-on learning experiences in the garden. For example, the ESL students work with their ESL teachers to grow a salsa garden. First-grade students connect working in the garden with their spring plants and animals science unit. This year, we've been working on elevating the work that we are doing in the garden so that students can eat what they grow. A huge part of our success this year has been the installation of the outdoor classroom. The classroom includes a water catchment system as well as shade for outdoor learning. The structure was built by LPS parent and volunteer Larry Valinsky, along with many other community members, to which we're very grateful for their time and their efforts. Another part of our success this year has been a new LPS Student Garden Club, and they're here with us tonight to share their experience.
Hi, I'm Ed Sheen. I go to LPS. I'm a member of the LPS Green Team. I'm here to talk about the gardening community. LPS knows a community garden needs a quarter. It is a garden for everyone, not just LPS students and staff. We think it is a, it is a good way to provide healthy food. As much as the Green Team is fun, this is the learning of school. The Green Team consists of fifth graders in LPS who volunteer to keep the garden to its best. Even though the Green Team are fifth graders, we try our best to inspire our community as much as we can. Thank you.
So one other exciting addition to the garden this year that we wanted to share with you was welcoming a guest gardener, Ms. Ivy, and this was sponsored by the LPS PTA. Ms. Ivy is a Nigerian native who came to LPS, and she taught the students pre-K through six and several lessons outside in the garden. And she taught them about growing plants and building community through stories and her own experience farming with her grandmother in Nigeria.
Hello, I am Lola Mensch. I am a member of the LPS Garden Club. I'm here to talk to you about the fresh lunches the garden produces and the harvests. When we harvest, we learn how to tell when the veggies are ready to pick. We make sure that we are gentle with the plants, too. Then Ms. Gardener brings the veggies to the cafeteria so Ms. Nidima can prepare food. When we think about fresh food, we think that it should be the freshest it can be. Ms. Nidima makes little cups of lettuce and peppers and puts them together to make delicious sides for the students and staff, which are to be amazing. Thank you.
Hi. Hi, my name is Brayden. I am a member of the LPS Go Green Club, Garden Club. We feel proud of what we have accomplished when everybody can... It feels like all the hard work pays off when everybody can eat and enjoy what we have grown, and it all started once.
Hello, my name is Sophia Riley, and I'm a member of the Green Team, and I'm here to talk about the importance of the garden. We work together to take care of the garden and keep the plants alive. I like to say, as the plants go, we grow. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Julie Ballmer. I'm a member of the LPS Green Team Club. I'm here to talk about how the students of LPS learn from the garden. Not only is the garden a fun experience, it is also a great learning experience. Ms. Ivy has taught us a lot about plants, from the very beginning of a plant's life to the very end of it. I now know how to properly pick plants and how much water is too much. It's been such a fun learning experience for the whole club. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Angelina, and I'm a mem- Angelina I. I am a member of the Garden, the Garden Club. I am here to talk about how we chose to do this. We put our own recess time throughout the year to take care of the garden so it's healthy and strong, so other kids can benefit from eating what we grow. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Eve Sullivan. I am a member of the LPS Green Team. Today, I'm talking about taking care of your, the garden as well as yourself. It is really important to take care of yourself, but it feels amazing to take care of the garden and provide life to the community.
Okay, so for our hopes for the future for the garden, we hope to keep this tradition going for many years and for all the kids coming up through the school. As you can see, the students are really inspired, and we're really excited to be here tonight. So we want to keep that excitement going and growing in the garden. So again, here's just a list of some of our volunteers. So I'm not going to read all of them, but as you can see, it is definitely a community effort to keep our garden running, and it, we are so thankful for all of our volunteers and donors, and thank you so much, our fifth graders, for coming and presenting. You did a fabulous job.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Not to put them more on the spot, but any questions? Because I really do have to give a lot of credit to our students. I even asked them and offered them time to practice, and they were like, "We got this." So please keep in mind, there's always a lot of nerves there. Young, and I could not be more proud. I also want to point out, these two amazing teachers did not put their names on the list at the end of the slide. This really was born out of something that they volunteered to do, so I also just want to give them a shout out for that as well. But truly, any thoughts? All right. If there aren't any questions, and I have some students that would like to give some plans to their teachers, and thank you so much for having us and all of the support.
Thank you for coming. And we'll pause for 45 seconds or so. If you guys want to get together, parents, take some pictures of them. If you want to group them up or anything. You guys did a great job. It's a fantastic presentation. Okay. We have a second presentation tonight also, and that will be, Mr. Hewitt will be talking about the results of the Start Strong Assessment, which was a test, sort of a benchmark assessment. It's intended to assess, you know, what kids learned last year that was taken at the beginning of this year. We didn't, we just received those results right before Christmas. So, Mr. Hewitt?
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for having me. That's a tough act to follow. Fifth graders and the community garden, which is a wonderful project, project that's been going on for a while now, as they mentioned, and just so much learning taking place, connecting you heard to literacy as well. Just really wonderful. I get to talk about Start Strong Assessments tonight. These are district benchmark assessments that have been required by the state that were administered back in early of this school year for the second year in a row now. Just give a quick overview of the Start Strong Assessments and what they're intended to do. And basically, these assessments are intended to demonstrate what level of support students may need in this current school year. They're also done similar to NJSLA, only in the sense that they also are assessing standards, the NJSLS, the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. Other than that, you'll see later that we're not asked to compare Start Strong to NJSLA test scores because it's really apples to oranges. These assessments are much more quickly done in a short period of time with fewer standards assessed, and there's also not state averages that have been provided, which means there's really not comparison scores. When we look at the scores that are here tonight, we're really looking at how our students this year did just compared to this one data point. What Start Strong is not intended to do, it's not meant to replace any of our district benchmark assessments, which would be things like, you may have heard of Fontes and Pennell assessments, Dibble assessments, Star Math, Star Reading, or writing benchmark assessments. It doesn't replace any of those assessments. And it also does not replace spring testing for NJSLA. So we will still have NJSLA testing coming up this spring. Actually, our 11th graders will be taking the NJGPA, which is a new assessment that's a graduation requirement starting March 13th, and that goes on for one week, testing ELA and math for all 11th graders in the district. Whereas our NJSLA assessments will take place later in the school year for students in grades four through 11 and include science, math, and ELA at select grade levels, fourth grade through 11th grade. So as far as what content areas were assessed, you'll see the grade levels as well as those contents and the math courses. The grade levels align a little bit differently than NJSLA, simply because, you'll see in the next slide, that basically these assessments are benchmark assessments measuring how well students did on the previous year's standards. So for example, when you look at grade eight and look at math, a student currently enrolled in eighth grade math is being assessed on seventh grade standards. Science is a little bit different in that grade levels are clustered together. So it's one assessment that was given to sixth graders back in the fall that was assessing third, fourth, and fifth grade standards, whereas at the middle school level, students that were assessed in science in grades nine were assessed for middle school, which the state considers middle school, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And then our high school content was assessed by our 12th graders' assessments back in September, and that was all of the high school science that was experienced ninth, 10th, 11th, and ninth, 10th, and 11th grade. Here's the number of students that were assessed. You will notice Algebra II stands out, just six students. That's just simply because we've changed our sequencing. We used to have math in the order of Algebra I, followed by Algebra II, followed by geometry. This year was the first year where we adjusted that sequence for students. Uh, this year was the first year where we adjusted that sequence to, for students to take Algebra I first, followed by geometry, and then followed by Algebra II. As a result of that change in sequencing, any students last year that were in Algebra I are now not in Algebra II as they would have been, but instead in geometry. And any students that were enrolled in Algebra II last year that would typically go into geometry, still went into geometry this year. So you'll notice a large number of students in geometry at 146. I also think it's worth noting, and I typically do this when we look at numbers, um, our data points and, and, um, population size is very small. So when we look at our data, any one student's scores actually account for anywhere from about seven tenths of a percent to two and a half percent, based on the number of students in that grade level or in that cohort that was assessed. So the assessments took place in September, and there's the specific dates. You'll notice it was about two weeks of, at, right at the end of September. Uh, and again, these are assessing standards from last year. So these same students, for example, that were assessed now in fourth grade, um, those same students were assessed in third grade through NJSLA, uh, right up in, into June at the end of last school year, the end of May into June. So I just thought it was important to note that we had about nine days of instruction at the end of last school year, then the summer, and then just a couple of, about a week of instruction prior to the start of these new assessments on the same standards. So there was that interruption, um, throughout the summer, obviously, for the couple of months that, um, students were not with us. They were primarily administered during instructional blocks, and I said primarily because for students that were in 12th grade being assessed in science, students this year in 12th grade may not be enrolled in a science class. So therefore, they had to be put into a group for science testing, which would have come out of a different time in the day. But typically, students that were assessed for English Language Arts were assessed during their English Language Arts class. And so same with the math. Also, a little bit different, when I present the NJSLA scores, we talk about a five-point scale, and we're looking at meets expectations, exceeds expectations. With the Start Strong Assessments, it's on three levels. So there are, the lowest level, Level One, is strong support is needed. Level Two, some support is needed, and less support is needed is marked at a Level Three. And we're about to go into some graphs, and the key on the right-hand side just shows the way those graphs are set up. So the darker the color, uh, the less support is needed for students. Um, so obviously, as you notice and look at those different performance levels, regardless of what level you're looking at, if the test is looking to indicate some support being needed for students. As we look at our summary, um, you can basically notice what I was talking about, the keys at the bottom, and I believe I put it on every slide where there's a, um, chart like this. But basically, the lighter color, um, requires more support, so that's where the strong support is needed, to the darker color where it shows, uh, some support, or, I'm sorry, less support is needed. The middle color, because it's like a purplish color, is where you see some support is needed. And this is just our overarching scores as an entire district, fourth grade through ninth grade, and then the additional courses beyond, um, for ELA and math, and then science through 12th grade. You'll notice the overall score is total. We look at the LPS summary. What I can compare some of these scores to is, um, because our students also took the Start Strong Assessment in the fall of 2021 for the first time last year. I can look at these scores and compare, although it's different students and different grade levels, so it's not the same cohort of students, but it is the same, a similar assessment, assessing in a similar way at a similar time in the school year. Um, and when I look at LPS's summary, in each of these content areas, we do see improvement from 2021. When we go on to looking at West Amwell, we see improvement actually, um, in ELA and science and math stayed consistent with what we saw in 2021. We look at the middle school, high school. Basically, when I talk about improvement and staying the same or similar, I'm talking about really looking at levels two and three together, those two higher ones, which are really showing some or less support needed. Uh, again, the test indicates in, for all school districts, just the way it's set up, to show some support needed at, regardless of what level you score. When we look at the South Middle School and High School summary, when we combine those second and third levels together, everything is pretty consistent with 2021 data within five percentage points. From there, we start to break it down a little bit further. These were summaries as of, overall as a school for each of the content areas. And I know that this looks, um, like a lot on one slide, but basically to sort of break it down, we're looking at just English Language Arts data, and it's broken down by grade level from fourth through 10th grade, the grade levels that were assessed. And for fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, you'll see individual scores, uh, for each building. So LPS fourth grade, ELA scores, West Amwell fourth grade, ELA scores, and then all the way to the right, you'll see an average for the district of what our district fourth grade scores look like. And you can see that as you go all the way through 10th grade. Uh, basically, uh, as we continue to look at second and third grade levels, some are less support that's needed. Uh, we range anywhere from 58 to 71% through those grade levels of students scoring some or less support needed, with an average of 65% at that some or less support needed, which are the two highest scores. When we look at math, we see a range of anywhere in those levels two or three, from 28% to 58%, with an average of 43% of levels twos and threes. You won't see a score for Algebra II simply because of the small population size of just six students. The state, we don't, um, actually report out anything less than 10 students, simply to protect confidentiality of students. And then, uh, science is broken out here by grade level, and again, by school. So sixth grade is the only grade level, uh, where you'd have two different schools testing. Otherwise, um, it's a full grade level in ninth and 12th grade here at the middle school, high school. Um, and you'll, you'll notice, uh, our range here is anywhere from 54 to 67% of levels twos and threes, uh, with an average of 50, 57% scoring in that, uh, sum to less support needed, the two higher areas. We're also required to break it down into different subgroups. Uh, I started off with socioeconomic status. When we look at this, and this is just a reminder, now that we're going into subgroups, it's not broken out by schools, uh, or grade levels. We wouldn't have enough students in any one grade level at any one school to really look at data, um, and have, um, a, um, a valid data point to study or analyze. But grouping all fourth through 12th grade students together, when we look at economically disadvantaged students in all three areas, um, we actually saw an increase in this year's scores compared to 2021 for economically disadvantaged students. And when we look at non-economically disadvantaged students, uh, we actually saw an increase in ELA, where math and science stayed consistent to what we scored in 2021. When we break, uh, the students down and the scores down by ethnicity, uh, you'll notice again, some NAs in certain areas where we didn't have enough students to, uh, really look at the data. Uh, however, basically, it's about the same average need for support as in 2021 in all three subject areas in the different ethnicities that were studied and grouped with enough data to, to report out. Broken down by gender, uh, one thing that I did find interesting is that both males and females did score similarly in all three subject areas. So you didn't see a higher score for females than males in some content areas. It really was consistently similar through all three content areas. Uh, and basically, uh, levels twos and threes, again, when grouped for both males and females, show a slight increase, just two to three points, nothing drastic, but a slight increase from 2021. Student data by English Language Learners. So when we look at this slide, we're looking at students who qualify for ESL's programming currently, as well as looking at students that used to qualify for ESL programming, but no longer do. So students currently, um, qualifying for programming or being found eligible for programming, you can see their ELA and math score. We didn't have enough in those grades tested for science to report out. Um, but you will notice that, um, students that are currently enrolled in ESL, um, programming, we did not have students at the highest level, and you'll see more, more percentage points towards the lower scale where strong support is needed, which indicates their need for ESL services. Um, whereas when we look at the former English Language Learners, we do see an increase for students that have exited or graduated from ESL programming, and we see better scores there. Just wanted to, these are two, the next two slides are actually directly from the New Jersey Department of Education and information that they suggest that we include when we, when we present this data. Um, and they basically talk about taking into account COVID-19 and the pandemic and, and what, um, impact that had on students and their learning. And I was just thinking of some of the different things that we, we know, you know, as far as students being home for the pandemic, um, they had various needs and family needs. They also had less instructional minutes in the school day. I have to say, when teaching remotely, I know that teachers were looking for various curricular materials that would work remotely and digitally through that hybrid setting. So different materials were used from various sources, uh, so we didn't see such consistency with curricular materials. It also mentioned that we should not compare any individual, uh, data to any of the NJSLA data, which I had mentioned earlier. One of the main things I wanted to note is just the apples to apples in the sense that it's a totally different scale, a one to three-point scale versus a one to five-point scale. Uh, and also, that we're not looking at Start Strong to really predict the future of students scoring on other standardized test scores. It truly is a benchmark assessment, as I mentioned, which is used to drive instruction. It's for teacher purposes, for planning lessons and, um, developing, uh, instructional minutes and plans and materials for students that meet their needs. So the data points, as far as what Start Strong Assessments provide, the district-level curriculum planning, as I was just alluding to, using this data helps us to really guide instruction and, more importantly, lesson planning, um, within the classroom. It also helps to evaluate the scope and sequence. So when we start looking at our curriculum and how things are aligned and, uh, what materials we have most of a focus on and areas we may need to put more of a focus on, other areas where students may score really, really well, and we look at how we deliver that instruction. That's an important, um, piece of data to think about as well. It helps to differentiate and scaffold learning for students, as well as, um, the last bullet, it talks about, uh, that communication with parents and educators. We received the individualized, um, student reports back in December, about a week before winter break, and all reports were mailed home to all students that had taken the assessments by winter break and received there. So, uh, on those score reports, there is a code now that allows parents to go to a parent portal to look at all of their child's, uh, standardized test results as well, in one place. So the last couple of slides are really talking about, what do we do with this data? How does this help to impact our planning for the future of SHRSD? Uh, and I broke it down into long-term, as well as the next slide, which will be more short-term. So long-term, some of the things that we've done, not just based on Start Strong data, but just on standardized testing data, benchmark data, and other ways that we've collected data through professional development and things throughout the district, um, some of the things that we've done, first off, instructional coaching is something, um, that we've really bolstered this school year particularly, in that we hired two new full-time positions whose sole purpose is instructional coaching. Um, those new positions began at the start of the school year. They are on part of the Teachers Association, and they follow that same calendar, but they're able to provide professional development. They're able to literally work with teachers one-on-one throughout the school year. To date, they've, there's two positions, two people. Each of them are preschool through 12th grade, um, so they are in all three buildings, and they're able to plan with teachers, they're able to look at data with teachers, and develop and find resources, and so they're really supporting students. They're placed in places where we see students with needs, where we know that we could have the greatest impact in working with students and continuing to grow so that all teachers have that opportunity to work with the instructional coaches. In addition to that, our, we're in our second year now of a blended learning cohort. Last year, we had a cohort of teachers from, again, all three buildings that worked with, um, a consultant from outside the district, Maureen Sigler, who worked with about 12, uh, teachers last year, throughout the entire school year, providing resources, helping to differentiate, and is now working in the second year with a new cohort of teachers, knowing that that first cohort of teachers continues to also be a part of the second year, and also support teachers, uh, in the buildings where they're currently teaching. We also revamped our district reading specialist schedule this year. Um, we've had a couple of changes due to the pandemic, again, where at one point, Mrs. Ungst was primarily at West Amwell, but still supporting LPS. Uh, this year, the reading specialist schedule, who does pull students for standards with support and small group instruction herself, um, in both buildings this year, but she also has time built into her schedule specifically for coaching, which has been really meaningful as far as meeting with different teachers one-on-one, as well as in teams at different grade levels to focus on district initiatives and fine-tune instruction even further, providing resources. The standards with support program itself, um, is data-driven and fluid, in the sense that it always has been data-driven. Students are placed in standards with support, math or ELA, as a result of data. Um, we continue to progress monitor with data through benchmark assessment, regular assessments each week, and looking at a more of a fluid group, students exit and enter standards with support throughout the school year, and we're keeping a really close eye on that, and that makes long-term differences as well, just revamping that program a little bit. Uh, the curriculum, things that we've done with the curriculum, looking at revisions to the curriculum in math, science, and writing. Um, we have new math programs throughout the district in all three buildings this year. We have, um, currently are piloting two different science programs, and our writing is definitely on our radar in an area, in the area of ELA that we're focusing, and looking at new resources there as well. Uh, curriculum pacing was also something else that we've put a magnifying, um, lens over, particularly in the area of math, making sure students are reaching content that's in the curriculum prior to the assessments that are being given. That's going to make long-term goals, not only for test results, but for students being prepared for the, the course that follows the one that they're currently enrolled in. Core practices is a focus. These came from our consultant, who, um, again, I mentioned, is in the second year of that, um, cohort this year. Um, Maureen Sigler brought in core practices, which are basically best practices, best teacher practices that have been, um, itemized in four different domains, and teachers have each selected, um, different core practices that they're focusing on through their professional development plan throughout this year. You'll actually see that again in the next slide, but that's going to have a long-term effect as we continue to fine-tune and really focus our goals and instructional practices. Uh, PD, or professional development, for all staff regarding small group instruction that is data-driven, creating small groups and stations that students rotate through in the classroom at all levels, uh, which are really truly data-driven, are going to change practice, change instruction, and make it more personalized, um, as we move forward in the long term. Uh, the, um, professional learning communities, that's the PLCs, you may have heard, talked about in the past. We have implemented those actually last year, and we're using, so last year was more or less learning about professional learning communities, how they work, what they look like. And this year, we're utilizing professional learning communities, which are groups of teachers working together, um, with goals and using data to make decisions about what's best for students moving forward. So that's a very formalized process. Our preschool expansion program, I think, is a long-term improvement that we recently did. We now offer preschool to all students in Stockton, Lambertville, and West Amwell, uh, free of charge, and we're expanding that program through a grant that we earned last school year. Uh, that's huge, and just getting students into the district sooner and allowing them to be a part of, um, rigorous curriculum, which sounds silly at the preschool level, but it really is for preschoolers. It's a very structured, serious curriculum. It's a very structured, serious curriculum that will lead them nicely into kindergarten and prepare them for the years ahead. Program audits that we've been doing. Counseling was, was audited just a few years back. ESL was audited last year, and special education is currently being audited. All of these with the, with the, our initiative and are motivated towards doing what's best for students and finding ways that we can continue to improve. And then additional transportation. I know we're talking instructional, but it really does make a difference. It provides access through the late buses for students to attend our after-school tutorial programs. And in addition to that, our summer busing was added last year for our integrated summer programs where we've offered not just special education programs in the summer, but also programs for general education students in a tutoring-type setting, which will continue this school year. All of these things that are been put in place are expected to have long-term effects and only improve student learning and achievement. So the next slide is short-term. Some of these you'll see are a little bit redundant. I was just talking about the summer programs. It is going, going to continue this summer coming up in 2023 with the late, with the busing happening again as well. The core practices, this is where I mentioned every single teacher has included them in their plans. That's a short-term goal. There, these are goals that are set for this school year. In addition, the last slide that was focused on long-term goals was professional development in all of the core practices, but teachers focusing on individual ones this school year. Also is a short-term change that will improve achievement as well. Those instructional coaches, team meetings, and the PLCs, those are the professional learning communities. All of those different times are times when teachers are coming together to work together to do things like supporting the new math program, which includes staying on pace and following best practices in that program and working together to roll it out in a way that's going to best serve students and best meet their needs. Analyzing and utilizing current data that includes our benchmark assessments as well as our state assessments. All of that data, including the Start Strong that we are talking about tonight, is data that can drive instruction, tell teachers where to focus on specific standards, which standards to focus on specifically, and then guide their, their lesson planning accordingly. Focused planning through small group instruction in the classroom. So this focused planning is really a focus on, again, those small groups, but thinking carefully about who's in those groups, what are those groups doing, what resources are used within those groups that's going to be most purposeful for the students that are using them. Focus goals on planning preparation and differentiation. This ties into progress monitoring, things like exit tickets and assessing each lesson as it happens, the plan for the next day, and to plan for those next set of stations. Our curricular materials in the short-term this year, I mentioned earlier, through the pandemic and hybrid learning, different materials needed to be used that were available that caused for a lot of supplementing of curricular materials. So less supplementing of materials that are written into our district-approved curricular, curricular documents will allow for more consistency and alignment with standards. And also, I mentioned standards, standardized test sampling. We've never been a district that really taught to the test in the sense of test prep. However, we do believe that utilizing the platforms that students are experiencing the tests on prior to the actual test is really important. So we are looking at utilizing test sample questions with students in things like do-nows, which is like a question at the beginning of a math class or the beginning of an ELA class or the beginning of a science class, so they get the feel of that platform and what the standardized testing environment feels like with the supportive teachers and classmates and things as well. So that's all important changes regarding curriculum that's happening now in the short-term. Progress monitoring, very specifically in ELA, progress monitoring student achievement on a particular goal, literally charting progress week by week with assessments, many assessments that show that students are obtaining goals and then moving on to a new goal. Tier-two interventions in all classrooms. Tier-two interventions are interventions that take place in a general education classroom where, again, it goes back to the station. Some of this is a little bit redundant, but those tier-two interventions are, are things around where students are working in small groups with a teacher. For example, if there's a, there's always a teacher-led station in a classroom where stations are implemented, and those tier-two interventions are very specific strategies designed to work with the students the teacher's working with directly to provide direct instruction that's targeted towards their needs. So those would be tier-two interventions that are put in place. The standards with support program grown through kindergarten, through eighth grade, through middle school, in ELA and in math. And again, that's a fluid program. We see students exiting and entering throughout the school year because we're continuing to move students and bring in new students that could use more support. And then our after-school tutorial sessions that started a couple of years ago are continuing now in-person this year after school and offered to all students kindergarten through 12th grade. And then also in the seventh through 12th grade building here, we have peer tutoring programs that are currently taking place for more of a short-term, immediate impact. Questions from the board?
So does anyone on the board have questions for Mr. Hewitt about his presentation?
I think one point that you made that I thought was really important is that we had the NJSLA, and then the kids had, you said, nine days of school. And then they had the summer, which is typically when we see a backslide. And then they had very little instruction before the next set of tests. But I appreciated understanding that one is regarding students and like, you know, evaluating student achievement, and one is more of a benchmark that allows us to look at what are specifics of areas that, that kids may not be grasping so that we can fine tune the curriculum for that. So I thought that that was a really important point. And I guess you, you talked a little bit about like how you can look into the, the system. So is this something that, you know, you can really look that close and at the granular level regarding?
You can. With the Start Strong assessments, it's meant to guide instruction. So teachers can actually go into the system, look at sample questions, look at students and, and which questions, which are aligned to different standards, and where the greatest need is, whereas other areas where students don't need as much time spent on that content or that standard. But I appreciate you bringing that up because you're right. NJSLA is considered a summative assessment. So it's really looking at how well did students do for that school year on everything they learned that school year in those content areas, where this assessment is really looking at a select standards from the previous school year to help teachers plan for this school year to make sure that students can start the year getting the supports that they need and then continuing to progress from there.
And, and with that in mind, Mr. Hewitt's too polite to say it, but the fact that the state didn't provide the data until half of the school year doesn't, you know, really help school districts. However, as he also noted, internally, we have our own benchmarks, our teachers do, and our, our team does. I would just actually ask one question now with regard to the after-school tutoring. How has the response been so far?
The response has actually been great. We have a total of kindergarten through 12th grade of about 75 students currently enrolled between the three buildings.
Okay, great. And that is, and I will just, for those, anyone who is interested, or I will note that that is still open. If you, it's not like it's going to be closed to anyone if your child is not taking advantage of it and you'd like them to get a little bit of extra help. That program is there. We encourage people to do it. My son is doing it on Tuesdays, I think it is. So it is a, you know, it's a worthwhile thing and can only help, right? Especially considering, you know, what we've been coming out of for the last couple of years with the pandemic and everything. Any other questions, comments on Mr. Hewitt's presentation? Yes, Gina?
Why, why would we subtract on, say, fourth grade?
They're really looking at, well, fourth grade is when the standardized testing begins just naturally because it's more giving them the chance to have a few years under their belt and start to really get down the standards that are those foundational skills. Because students start at such different levels in kindergarten and preschool and first grade. So by third, fourth grade is when students are really sort of getting into grade-level expectations, and it's not quite expected to be as wide of a range. Of course, there's still a range, but students are also typically identified for different supports that they may need in their school day by those grade levels, too. So there's a couple of different reasons.
Any other questions on the, the report? Okay, in that case, thank you very much, Mr. Hewitt.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And we will go to the period of public comment. We will open the meeting now for comment on any items on the agenda. If you have questions about Mr. Hewitt's presentation, if you have a statement you'd like to make to the board. Just to remind you, we do have procedures and requirements that include standards of conduct that need to be followed by members of the public during comments. So please don't be disruptive, don't be disruptive. Disruptive conduct includes sustained inappropriate behaviors, shouting, interruption, and the use of profanity. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes. We just asked for you to keep it to three minutes because that helps us to hear what you're saying, but also to keep the meeting moving. We ask you to come up to the podium, tell us your name and your municipality, and then make your comment. We will have a second period of public comment later in the meeting. And if you have a comment that you think is going to take longer than three minutes or you have an issue, you can always contact the superintendent directly. You can copy the board members on that and, you know, express yourself through a letter, email, phone call, whatever. In that case, so I will say public comment is open. Does anyone have anything they'd like to say? Come on up.
Hi, Jen Bachelor from West Amwell. I have a couple of questions, more so relating to the testing updates, if that's all right. I don't know, I don't, I know I'm never short for time, but tutoring. We've, we're listing that as kind of in the context of helping with testing scores, right? But it's open to everybody. So we didn't do any, like, you know, we're not identifying students like, oh, hey, you're one of those kids that scored a one, you should be in tutoring versus, you know, some parents are like, you shouldn't have a B in math, go to tutoring. So, you know, and that's kind of one of the points I wanted to make about having 75 kids in the tutoring program. It's a lot of kids, and there's some kids in that, in that group that probably scored worse on the testing. And kind of going back to, you know, I see a lot of long-term stuff, which is great, you know, and we will see impacts. But I wonder like if we could overlay and look at some of the shorter-term things and see like, what are we doing now that's different based on our test scores than we were, say, four years ago, pre-COVID? Because I feel like the themes on a lot of long-term programming seem to sound the same. So I'd like to, to understand specifically, we know this COVID learning loss gap. We know our, our test scores and something, you know, how do we look at that to see what's more targeted and specific short-term? You know, because as a parent, I hear these great things that I know are good and valuable for the district, but hands-on with my own kids and what I see and feel for my, you know, I have three, I have one who is not getting met. And I'm getting letters from state organizations telling me he needs extra support. But I'm getting, you know, tutoring that's open for everybody. And, and it, I, it's, you know, I'm just struggling to kind of see, you know, what are we doing? And if we could identify that difference, like, here's what we've always done for kids, because we've done tutoring, right? We've always had summer school programming, but maybe we could identify like, what's that extra chunk that we're doing that is specific to COVID learning loss, this cohort of fifth grade, my current fifth grade, right? And in that specific area of math where we know that they had a, a, a pretty big gap. And then also just a specific question, do we, do we know numbers in terms of how many teachers are in that cohort, the cohorts with the new blended learning, like, as opposed to like the entire district, like what, what would that?
Mr. Hewitt, if you're comfortable answering questions, please do.
Jeff Hewitt again. So I just wanted to kind of respond to that. So the after-school tutoring is open to everyone, and it's done on purpose. It's not meant to be a test prep program or an opportunity for students that scored ones to improve there, but ultimately, the after-school tutoring is an extra support for students to improve in ELA and math specifically. And the reason why we open it to everyone, and by the way, so there's 75 students, but we have enough teachers that we don't have any groups larger than five students. So we keep it very small so we can target it. But our real change in addressing test scores is more within the school day. What people can do and everyone has access to, because not everyone can stay after school, regardless of transportation or not. So what's the real change is through that, those small group instruction in the classroom with the use of this data so that students' needs can be targeted on a daily basis in the room where they're teaching with their, with their content area teacher. So that's the real change. So the after-school programs are wonderful, but we know not everyone has access. And so we're able to keep the groups small and also work with students. We've had teachers reach out to families to say, oh, this would be a great program for you because they recognize they could benefit from that. And, and so that's another way that we've kind of targeted students that could really use that extra support to get them the extra support. And as far as the blended learning cohort, each year, there's been about a dozen teachers. So we're in 24, the second year, so about 24 teachers total that have been involved over the two years throughout the three districts, the three buildings, sorry, and within our district. I think I answered this question. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Hewitt. Does anyone else have a comment they'd like to?
Hi, Sherrod Turkey, Lambertville. And sometimes when I start looking at the agenda, I really get into the weeds. So regarding some of the things you have up for first read tonight, one of them is policy 2431 regarding athletic competition. And I read it, and there's a part that says that students in grades seven through 12 who wish to participate in athletic competition must participate in the district's random drug testing program. And then it says, see policy 5536, which is the random drug testing policy. And I was struck because in my experience, and my older child, I think, started middle school, so registered for soccer in 2017. That is optional for seventh and eighth graders. It is required for high school athletes to participate in the random drug testing program, but it's not required for seventh and eighth graders. So I checked policy 5536, which is the drug testing policy, and it states that it shall apply to students in grades nine through 12 who participate in athletics co-curricular activities or who park, and shall also apply to all South Hunterden students in grades seven through 12 who voluntarily elect to participate in the program with parental consent. So, and, and that's what I've seen. And so I'm just asking, because there's a discrepancy, to edit the athletic competition policy so that it accurately reflects the random alcohol and drug testing policy. And just to point out for anybody who's wondering, again, everybody can opt in. So it's, it's always available, but I personally prefer to be able to opt out the middle schoolers. The other thing that I noticed is a revision in that same policy, which has to do with eligibility in terms of your grades and passing classes. And what it says is that to participate in district-sponsored programs of athletic competition, students have to have passed all courses required for promotion or graduation in the preceding semester. And I know that there need to be eligibility requirements, like academically, as much as we'd all like the kids to be able to participate no matter what. But I was thinking about, you know, basketball, wrestling, dance team, and bowling all straddle semesters. So I thought, well, this is a real problem. If, if I'm in the middle of my basketball season and I fail first semester English, what does that look like? Am I yanked mid-season? I mean, that sounds horrible. So I just was wondering if maybe that's something that as you're advising, you look at just to consider the, the fact that kids will be in the middle of a season when a semester goes from one to the next. And then the last thing, oh, never mind, save it for another day. Thank you.
Well, we've got a second period of public comment. I will just note that that policy that you referenced on athletics is on the first read tonight. So after tonight, board members will be making comments. There was, actually ironically, I was looking at it and considering your daughter is in, you have a daughter in sixth, right?
Yes.
And who played in the middle school basketball game today. So, you know, clearly the So, you know, clearly, the seven to 12 is something else that needs to be looked at in that policy. As far as I probably, never mind, I'm not going to address the eligibility, although I believe that that has in fact happened. Yes, I am addressing it, sorry. That where a student, if it, you know, if they're ineligible at the end of a semester, or even if it's in the middle of a sports season, they have to get their grades up in order to be able to play again. And that has happened in football season, where someone has failed classes at the end of the year, and we're not eligible to play football the next year. And it has happened in basketball season. But something to consider. Thank you. Is there any other comments? Miss Prim, thank you. Damn it.
Hello, everyone. Hello, everyone. You can't remember my name. I can't speak.
I will start.
I'm here tonight on behalf of our Association's Family Literacy Night Committee to announce our event for this coming spring. And it's, we had planned to make this announcement tonight, and it seems especially appropriate after all the talk we've done about literacy in our schools and all the wonderful things that the district is doing to promote literacy and learning for our students. So the South Hundred Inn Regional Education Association would like everyone in our school community to save the date for our annual Family Literacy Night, which will take place on Wednesday, March 29th, at 6:00 p.m. at Lambertville Public School. This event is sponsored for the community by association members. Those are our teachers, paraprofessionals, and other support staff from all three buildings, with the assistance of a grant from the NJEA. We are very excited about this year's theme, literacy is everywhere. And we will feature this year activities across content areas and grade levels. We do hope to see you all there on March 29th at LPS. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you.
Hi. Michael Strauss from West Hamwell. First, welcome to our new board. Thank you all for continuing to or starting to serve on the board. It is very much appreciated. I did want to call out one thing before I get into the science and math scores. And it's just that a post went out today on Facebook showing the new, the names that were offered to the students. And I would encourage the board to kind of take a look at this. I know that there's a plan in place, but most of what is shown in there just really lacks the distinctiveness and the special spirit of our communities. So in that spirit, I'd encourage us to continue using South Hundred Inn Regional School District across all three buildings for right now, to really reinforce the unity that's called for in this plan. Now, getting on to the math scores, which is really something that concerned me. I know that if, I'm going to throw out a few questions, if you don't mind, but I'm especially concerned at the fourth and fifth grade math levels. One, I have a fifth grader, but they are very distinctive when you look at the numbers. And as you talk about pandemic learning and the consistency of those curricular materials, I'm just wondering whether there is any special plan, not only for those fourth and fifth. I know that the, there's additional support in the fourth-grade classrooms right now for math, but are we looking towards not only the fourth and fifth graders, but the K through three, or really, I guess, two through three, first through three, who were affected so much by the pandemic? And also kind of looking at the structure that's going on right now. Kristin Ongst and Orton Gillingham have been kind of a constant in our ELA scores, and I think that we are seeing some difference because of that. And is there a new math program in place? I know that you kind of referenced it, but not really talked about how it's going to be broken out. And also, are we thinking about bringing back that district math specialist position? I know that the instructional coaches were brought in to have an effect on that, but there's a noticeable effect from Mrs. Ongst, who not only touches the kids, but also the teachers. And we, as parents, and I think the kids, see the effects of that. And if, I'm not totally sure, and it could just be that the lack of visibility to the instructional coaches of whether we are actually getting what we want out of that. I know it's a new program, so I don't want to cut it off before it's off the ground, but I just want to make sure that we are laser-focused on this math. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Does anyone else have a comment? If not, I will. Oh, if you have, if you have an answer to that, absolutely.
I think it helps. I mentioned a new math program, and the new math program, actually programs, but particularly at the elementary schools, is a K-5 program. So we have rolled out Reveal Math, which is a new program this year in all six of those grade levels. And it is one of the pieces that we really needed to do. We had a program in math, obviously, that has been in place. However, through the pandemic and other resources being brought in, it was not being used consistently grade level to grade level. And so now we're seeing and filling those gaps and things from assessments that we've done with our benchmarks, as well as other standardized assessments, and utilizing this new program and truly rolling it out with true fidelity, making sure these are the materials that we're using with those small group instruction, which is built into this program, K-5, is we are already seeing improvements in our math. And as far as the instructional coaches go, they are on the ground running, already working with close to 50 staff members in very intensive cycles of eight-week cycles, working one-on-one with teachers, and planning with them together, looking at data together, developing lesson plans, and making sure that these materials are being put in with fidelity. And that is a focus. Math is definitely an area of concern, looking at our test scores, and it is one we're certainly working on. So we've got a new program that rolled out this year with PD that started last summer, actually, the end of last school year.
Thank you, Mr. Hewitt. Any other questions for public comment? There being none, I will close this period of public comment. Actually, do we have online questions? No online comments, so I will close the period of public comment. As I said, there'll be another one later in the meeting. And we will go to our committee reports. So we'll start with Buildings, Browns, Transportation, Finance, and Safety. Mrs. Purcell.
So we met on this past Thursday, the 19th. We talked about, I'll do a couple of highlights, and spent a lot of time meeting with our auditors, going over our annual audit. We do have to wait for the state to allow us to issue that, so that we, hopefully, that will be around our next meeting, so we can actually dig into that and also vote to accept Another thing to highlight, ROD grants are coming back. So we are approving just the ability for our architect to apply for ROD grants on behalf. So hopefully, that will come to fruition and help us with some projects. We have quite a few items up for auction, about a week and a half. So you'll see those. And then also, quite a few items that we have auctioned off and accepting the winning bids for those. Yeah. Received some additional funding, ECF funding, and that's actually going to allow us to put money towards updating the Chromebook, so we can purchase those outright and not have to lease purchase those. So that was a, I think, amount of about $292,000, as well as $60,000 towards iPad purchases. We talked about our NJARM investing, and at this point, we've gained about $200,000 in interest, so it's right on track to gain interest on the referendum funds. Talked about the stock-in transfer. We're towards the end of that process, hopefully. We're waiting on the court to rule on the quiet title, so that should take about 45 days to complete. Once that's done, we should be free to turn that over to the borough. And that is it. So I'd like to move with items A through L.
So moved. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Second, Ronnie, thank you. Any discussion on items A through L? I will, I'll just make two notes. One, under our field trips, one of the, you'll notice, one of the field trips is the Gravity Hill Farm Field Trip, which LPS, they mentioned they are one of the folks that are, one of the groups that is supporting that community garden that we saw the great presentation on. Mr. Hewitt, I think you guys did that field trip when you were principal at LPS. So it's been something that's a longtime thing at the school. Also, just to mention, a ROD grant is something that, where the state will pay a portion of your capital projects, as Diana said, they pay 40% of the cost. So if you're replacing, in fact, the last round of those that was available was in around 2011 or 2012, and we were able to get a grant that helped to pay for repairs at Lambertville Elementary School. So we are hopeful that the same will happen once we put our names in the hat. My understanding is the state has about $25 million. It's not a huge amount of money when you consider all the schools in the state. So hopefully, we'll get a piece of that pie.
And we were told that they're kind of prioritizing more maintenance-type things, like more necessary maintenance. So what we're approving is allowing us to kind of get things and hopper to apply for those, because once the applications are open, things are going to be moving back.
If there's one thing that we have around here, it's maintenance projects. So any other discussion on items A through L? In that case, let's vote. Gina Pachetti.
Yes.
Brian Keith.
Yes.
Kovalaski.
Yes.
John Lewis.
Yes.
Trace Petrucci.
Yes.
Dana Purcell.
Yes.
Ronnie Todd Moreno.
Yes.
Jim Gallagher. Yes. Personnel, Mr. Kovalaski, can you give us a report on this? Were you in that meeting? You were in that meeting, right?
Yeah, I was in there.
Sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Yep.
Okay. Well, we do have a, we need a motion to approve items A and B. I have a motion to approve items A and B. I know, but we do still have to approve these, do I not?
Yes.
Tracy, thank you for the motion. Can I have a second? Second, Ronnie, thank you very much. Any discussion on items A and B?
Other than it's sad to see that Mr. Ongst is retiring.
It is sad to see that Mr. Ongst is retiring and surprising, because I didn't think he was ready for retirement, Agent. And Ms. Schaefer, Mrs. Schaefer. Any, no discussion? Then let's vote. Brian Keith.
Yes.
Kovalaski.
Yes.
John Lewis.
Yes.
Trace Petrucci.
Yes.
Dana Purcell.
Yes.
Gina Pachetti.
Yes.
Ronnie Todd Moreno.
Yes.
Jim Gallagher. Yes. Curriculum and Technology. Ms. Petrucci, you have anything to report?
I do.
Okay.
I don't have anything to put forward for approval by the board tonight, but I'll give a couple of updates and some of the things to discuss. And I'll do my best, hopefully you guys can hear me, okay? In terms of curriculum writing hours, which are, which have just been approved, in personnel was around art drawing at PT, with, you know, kind of an expansion in that area, as well as kind of an enhancement to our agricultural science program, which Mrs. Hayes is working on, which, you know, expands to things like service animals, sustainability, emerging technology in the environmental space. So it's really exciting to see us kind of take this to the next level. We also have, just quickly, a couple of technology updates in terms of getting new copiers by, and I think the office staff in both LPS and West Hamwell, I was happy to hear about Finally, Ms. McKnight presented the plans for next year's master schedule in the middle school and high school. I won't go into a lot of details right now, because that will be presented to the board next month, at next month's meeting. But it does shift the length of block time from 83 blocks to 56-minute blocks, and we would be retaining the ABCD schedule that we have now. Then we also have the Start Strong presentation, which you've all seen this evening. So I don't have anything to move for curriculum and technology.
Thank you very much. But I'll keep you on the phone here to talk about the policy meeting.
Yes. So we did meet this evening. We, just to kind of start with where we started, the exec session by law, which we spoke about at the last meeting, is ready for approval and to go into reality, which couldn't come at a better time, obviously. So that's really around the ability to have virtual participation in executive sessions. And then, as you heard, and I'm sorry, I can't hear very well the people talking, so I got to catch up on that later, but I did hear there were some questions around those policies and regulations that are being put forward as a first read. I do invite folks to email me if there's specific areas, but I did get, I will get the notes from the individual that was speaking at the earlier part during public presentations around athletic competition and the accommodation for sixth grade, as well as the question around the drug testing, which I did, I heard a little bit, but I didn't hear everything. So I will go back and re-listen to that. But so I would like to move for approval the policies A and B.
So. Mr. Keith, thank you. Any discussion on policies A and B?
Them being moved together, so now one is proposed, right? Separate them?
We can separate. So any other discussion on policies A and B?
All right. I still have issues with the, I still have issues with the second session going over to recalling it. Proven as private, staying confidential, so I'll go to vote now. Sure.
Any other discussion on items A and B? In that case, let us, Andrew, let us vote on policy A, or item A, the first reading of the board policies, 2431, R8420.2, R8420.7, and R8420.20. Kevin Kovalaski.
Yes.
John Lewis.
Yes.
Trace Petrucci.
Yes.
Dana Purcell.
Yes.
Gina Pachetti.
Yes.
Brian Keith.
Yes.
Ronnie Todd Moreno.
Yes.
Jim Gallagher.
Yes.
And now let us vote on the second reading of board bylaw, year 166. Let's begin, starting with Kevin Kovalaski.
No.
John Lewis, yes. Trace Petrucci.
Yes.
Dana Purcell.
Yes.
Gina Pachetti.
I'm sorry, I didn't vote over. I asked a question. I didn't vote on the first reading. Can I vote on the second?
You can.
I can.
You're a member of the board, and if you'll vote on.
Yes.
Brian Keith.
Yes.
Ronnie Todd Moreno.
Yes.
Jim Gallagher.
Yes.
Both motions carried. Okay. School and community.
All right. School and community met virtually this month. We discussed the student achievements announcements and recognized that many of the announcements that come out are sports-related. We used the newsletter specifically last year to showcase a broader array of, like, classroom activities, extracurricular activities, and the newsletter will be coming back in February. Part of that newsletter, there was a template that was created for teachers to use to make it easier to submit content, but we also have recognized that there's a need to review that content for balance. Then we also talked about the fact that, you know, the, we don't have a printed paper, so taking pictures is something that's always important, because you're more likely to be, have information, you know, having the articles printed if there's pictures that go along with it. We also discussed potential technology options for engaging with families in addition to the website and social media. We recognize that there is a need to reduce the number of platforms that parents are using to engage with their kids and with their kids' teachers. And so for consistency, and also because the number, the sheer number of different platforms can be overwhelming, we really need to look at, how can we reduce that? We know that OnCourse, which is We know that OnCourse, which is the new student information system, is going to be phased in starting with next school year. And we talked about the advantages of accelerating that process for the parent user in particular. We also reviewed the 23-24 district calendar, noting that the first day of school in the coming year will be after Labor Day again. That's to accommodate more time for the construction. And we talked about the fact that many districts are now using that start date of the last week in August rather than after Labor Day, like we did last year. And I think we've recognized that a lot of people understood that because of the construction, we needed to start school earlier this past year for this school year. But that generally, the feedback was that while we understood it, it wasn't optimal for a lot of families. There were concerns about childcare and about our district calendar lining up with camp schedules. So it's something that we know that other districts have been, have implemented, but we would want to make sure that we got community feedback before we were to do that again. We also are looking at the half-days at the end of the year to see if that's something that is a benefit, or if that's something that we can modify this year. We also discussed the school naming. To remind people, the process was that a Google form poll was put out to the community asking for suggestions for the school names, and we received 121 responses, which was really good. The administration then met, and they narrowed those responses down to five pairs. The next step is that students would vote on those names, and then the top two would come to the Board of Education. So it's really, we designed this so that students would have a say in what the schools would be named. So we look forward to seeing what the students vote for. And we also talked about bringing the students together to announce the new names, since it is meant to be, you know, it is really them celebrating their new school. We also talked about the construction timeline and the importance of notifying stakeholders in terms of the expectations for the construction and the timeline. So once a contractor is selected, we will start regular outreach to the community. There's been discussions about having open forum sessions to really, you know, make sure that we're gathering questions and addressing concerns, and using pretty much all of the platforms that we have at our disposal, the district newsletter, listserv, social media, to try to provide regular updates on the progress. And we would be providing additional, more detailed information to the people that are in the immediate vicinity of the construction, recognizing how important it is to, how important it is to let people know when there might be something happening, so that they can plan around it. And it was also noted that that correspondence would need to happen during the summer months as well. And lastly, we reviewed the school climate survey. We looked at last year's climate surveys. This is a survey that goes out to students, to parents, to families, and to staff. And so we looked at the surveys from last year and at a draft survey that potentially to be used this year. We noted that there were 238 student surveys received last year, but only 30 parent surveys. So we talked about the benefits of combining some of our surveys and reducing the number of questions as much as possible in order to improve the response rate. And Tony and Mr. Hewitt are going to be working on an updated draft for that. And that is it, nothing to move.
A question. Were the parent surveys mailed to parents, or is it all online?
No, this was a, it was a Google form last year.
Okay.
Are you in a school name? Why were they paired up? Connect with?
I think it was.
There's supposed to be five names for the elementary, five names for the middle school?
My understanding was that the administration decided to do that because there were things that matched better, so that they had the same general concept.
Yeah, I can answer that as well. I mean, the thought process was, we didn't want to get in a situation where there was a, you know, South Hundred and Elementary School, and then it, you know, Green, you know, Hillside Middle School, it didn't make sense, and that's what we were concerned about. So when we looked at all the choices and took the most, the ones that set the criteria and also were the most popular, we decided to group them accordingly. So one thing I noticed was that there were some situations where we had another school with the same name. Is that anything that we looked at when we were kind of honing in on this election? Like another school in Jersey with the same name? Uh, no, I mean, we didn't really factor that in. That happens a lot. I mean, we wouldn't be the only one. Okay.
Okay. Thanks for the report. So, so we will, we have two routine items on the agenda for approval tonight. One is the, accepting the harassment, intimidation, and bullying report, which I think covers incidents in December. There were two investigations. None were determined to be harassment, intimidation, and bullying. The other is, we have to republic a report that we did safety drills and fire drills in all of our buildings during the month of December, and those were conducted in accordance with the state law. Can I have a motion to approve items A and B, please? Diana, thank you. A second, please?
Second.
Second, Sean, thank you very much. Any discussion on items A and B? And then let's, this is a voice vote, right? So we can vote all in favor? Aye? Anyone opposed? So now I will, as promised, I will open the public comment period to a second period. Again, we'll ask you to just keep the comments to about three minutes. And does anyone have something they would like to bring before the board? That would be fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sharon Durkey.
Hi, sorry, Michael Strauss again. First, I forgot to say this the first time, but I really do enjoy having the student representative on. I also have to say, I come quite often, and I've noticed every single time he leads with academics, and it just makes a powerful statement at a Board of Ed meeting, and I really appreciate that. I did have a question. I know Tony is out this evening, but is there any update on DCA approval for going out to bid for the new schools?
Actually, Mr. Suzo, are you still on the line?
Yeah, Brian, yeah, I'd like to share an update. So we did receive our electrical approval today, actually, from the DCA. We're waiting on one more component of the construction piece of it, from the construction official, which we were hoping, if not getting by the end of today, definitely by tomorrow. And then the last piece is, we were working on what's called the compteur approval. So the goal is, we're really hoping that we're going to be able to get out the bid by next week. So, you know, and then we would be three to four weeks out, you know, with the bids would be out advertised, before we would do a bid opening. So we're, we're up, we're close, we're getting there, we're really at home stretch here.
Great, thank you.
Any other, anyone else have a public comment they would like to make? Okay. Any online comments? Then I will close the period of public comment. And the board does have a need to go into a brief executive session. This will probably take about 15 minutes. When we come out of the executive session, we will be, we will not be taking any further actions this evening, so you're welcome to stay or go. So with that, I will need a motion to enter the executive session.
Motion.
Ronnie, thank you very much.
Second.
And Diana, one second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will take just a four-minute recess and go into executive.